Ladies, how are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is January 25th, 2024, and we have six matters on our agenda tonight. The first is petition 5075, James and Susan Gagny. Are they here? Come on up. Property location at 18 Bass River Road, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2.2 and/or variance from 203.5 for side setback relief to allow replacement of garage with a one-bedroom addition in required setback. How are you tonight?
Good.
Excuse me. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jay Walter, and this is Lisa Monahan. We're from Intasis Architects. We're representing the clients, who are Jim and Susan Gagny, sitting in the back.
Okay. How are you tonight? Okay.
So...
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your petition here?
Yes. The property has been owned by the owners for 25 years. The Gagnys just took it over from Jim's mom, who passed recently. They're renovating it for their own use. What we had to do was tear down the garage because there was no foundation underneath it. We were replacing the garage with a bedroom and a bathroom. So when the contractor poured the foundation for the new bedroom-bathroom where the garage was, he built it four inches closer to the lot line than the contract documents indicated.
So is that a new pour, that garage?
That was a new pour. It was supposed to be in exactly the same place as the old garage.
Okay.
And in fact, you'll see that the corner of the garage is the closest part. It's not parallel to the lot line. And it's that one little corner that's four inches closer.
Okay. And you want to replace the existing garage and now turn it into a bedroom?
Turn it into a bedroom-bathroom. Actually, we've already built it.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the house, actually. When you got your building permit, did you plan that in the bill that you were gonna make that a bedroom?
Yes.
And the building department didn't say anything about that?
Well, they approved the plans. I mean, we have a new septic system for the additional bedroom. And they, we got the permit. I mean, I went through a review process before I submitted the permit, and was very upfront about what we were doing.
Okay. Is that an enclosed breezeway?
It is now. It wasn't originally.
Okay. I know before it wasn't, but that's completely enclosed, so you don't have to go outside to get into that right over there?
Right. That's actually the new entrance for the house where the breezeway was.
I see. Okay.
So we basically replaced the breezeway and the garage in kind and made the breezeway a mudroom and the garage a bedroom-bathroom.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, the existing, the previous foundation was, you said, what, four inches more away from the lot line?
Now, that corner was four inches further away.
Excuse me. Okay.
And when we got the as-built, we saw it was 6.8 instead of 6.5.
6.4 rather than 6.8. The original, the existing condition was 6 feet 8 inches, and the current as-built, 6 feet 4 inches.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else at this time?
No, that's about, that's it.
Okay. We're gonna go to board members for questions. Barbara, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
John?
Not really. Pretty poor.
Okay. Jay?
Yeah, I have a couple. I'm just curious, were there any other building permits issued since 1955? The only one I have in my package is 1955.
I did a search, and I couldn't see that there were any.
It was originally said that you could get within 10 feet of the property line, and I know this isn't. So was that, was this garage built after the original?
You know, I think the 10 feet was to the rear lot line, and the built condition is 11 feet 4 inches to the rear.
There's, I think, oh, 20 feet. 20 feet from the front and 10 feet from the rear. Okay.
Yeah, and I'm quite, I'm confident that the garage and breezeway was built with the house.
Original?
Yeah.
The rear of the house and the house is only seven feet away?
No, so the rear of the house is...
In the plan, it shows seven.
I think the permit said it could be 10 feet away, and it's 11 feet 4 inches away, as-built condition.
For the, for the, for the one you're doing now, but I'm saying the original house was only seven.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, the original house is only seven. You're right.
Right. Guess you can't do much about that now, huh?
Quite frankly, not much conforms on this lot.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you're in an R-40 zoning district. I know it's pre-existing, but...
Yeah. What year was this built? 55 is what the original...
All right, okay. Well, all right. Yeah, so they're on the old lot lines, yeah.
So you're, what you got approved for was 6'8", and you air it 6'4", is basically the sum.
That's right.
And the front porch, does the front porch currently exist?
Yes, it does.
They're just closing it in, is that...
Well, we're just closing it with screen. There's no...
Screened in?
No windows.
But no change in the footprint?
No change in the footprint.
That's all I have.
And we tried to, you know, keep the garage and the breezeway the same scale as the original house.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Anthony. How are you?
I'm well. How is everyone there? Thank you.
Good, good.
For accommodating me to...
Do you have any questions for the petitioner tonight?
I do. Just curious as to what the change of four inches would cost if you were forced to redo it to come into compliance, if you have an understanding of that.
Well, would it, are you just talking about the, in the corner? Or are you talking about along the one side?
The one side, not in compliance with the totality of the zoning bylaw. I mean, just the four-inch strip that you see in the as-built as being beyond what you anticipated, the foundation part.
I'd have to, have to look at it. I mean, they'd have to strip it and reframe it and change the roof lines, so it would be an expensive endeavor.
Redo the...
It's fair to say it'd be significant.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
Would it be fair to say it would be significant?
It would be significant, yeah.
Significant and difficult.
Yeah. This was basically an error by the contractor.
Anything else, Anthony?
No.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, I think that's it.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Does anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. We don't have any correspondents on this, do we? No correspondence.
I didn't see any.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing to the public and begin board deliberations. This requires a variance, not a special permit.
You know, I had applied for a variance.
You did.
The building inspector advised us to go for a special permit.
Okay. That's all right.
The commissioner, yeah.
You asked for both forms of relief.
Yeah.
You're creating a brand-new nonconformity is the reason why I believe you need a variance. It's not an extension or alteration of a pre-existing, legally pre-existing, nonconforming structure. You went into that sideline, so you kinda, but that doesn't say that you don't qualify for a variance. We can have that discussion. And then if you want to proceed with your request for special permit, we can talk about that, too. Okay? Does anybody disagree with me on that? And if so, we can have a discussion on that.
I agree.
Okay.
Agree.
As far as, can we speak? Or we...
Well, we're kinda closed off, but go ahead. No, if you want to say something else, go right ahead. That's okay.
Well, I think we qualify for the conditions for a variance. I mean, it's very site-specific. The lot lines are not parallel to the house, and it's just the one corner. And it would be a financial hardship to correct. And I don't think it denigrates the intent of the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Anybody like to begin a discussion on this? Thoughts? Barbara, what do you think?
I agree. I think that the lot is an unusual-shaped lot, which is usually the reason for some of these variances.
That is one of the criteria owing to the shape of the lot. Yep.
And, you know, it would be a significant now that it's already there, but if it's, you know, trying to, it sounds like they were trying to just match the current footprint. So it'd be a hardship. I kind of agree that it was, it's worthy of a variance.
Okay. What do you think, John?
Yeah, I would agree.
Barbara?
I agree.
Anthony, what do you think?
Generally speaking, I don't find that self-created hardships are, meet the criteria. And, but this isn't necessarily an owner-created hardship. The lot lines and the plot of the property is certainly within the rubric of what we would consider unique in the zoning district under the guidelines, and there is, there would be a financial hardship for them to come into compliance now. But, you know, generally speaking, I, I think they would meet the criteria, although, you know, just precaution for others, self-created hardships generally aren't warranted, in my opinions.
No, I agree with you there. However, accidents do happen in building, and sometimes they're not intentionally done. It seems that that's what happened here. I think it would be a great hardship for you to have to change that around, and I think tens of thousands of dollars would be probably in the ballpark. I do think, in terms of the variance criteria, you do certainly meet the criteria that the shape of the lot is a factor. I think there is a hardship. I think it's financial. And I think, to grant a variance, we would not be derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Nor would you be creating any undue hazard, nuisance, or congestion. So for those reasons, I believe you do qualify for the variance. I would recommend to the board, and it sounds like they're in favor of supporting that, but I would recommend that they support a variance in this case. And I'm wondering if there's anybody that would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to accept the variance as outlined in the plans.
You write that down for me. Okay. Motion made by Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Barbara beat you to that one, Anthony. We'll get you on the next one. Seconded by Barbara. Do you have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. Before you leave, we would like you to withdraw your request for special permit without prejudice. You can always come back.
I hereby withdraw my application for a special permit without prejudice.
Okay. I have a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded?
Seconded.
John got you on that one, Barbara. Okay. Motion made by Jay, seconded by John, to approve the withdrawal of special permit without prejudice. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Now, once the decision is filed with the town clerk, 20-day period must elapse. That's a technical waiting period. It's an appeal period. After that, you can come over to the C.R. Administrative Assistant, Dolores. She'll give you the special permit, take it to the possible county registry of deeds, record it, and please bring a copy back for our records. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All righty. Have a nice night.
Thank you so much.
How can I help you, sir?
Yes, this is the first time I come to the town meeting. I got a little card and email. That's the reason why I come here. What's, what's the meeting about today, please?
Well, you're gonna have to sit and listen, sir. Okay? If you sit and listen, okay? Which petition did you get a notice on?
I don't know what the zoning board did.
It's... Eight Captain York?
Which one?
Eight Captain York.
Eight Captain York?
Yes.
We don't have that on our agenda tonight. That's not on for tonight.
It said, it said, uh, January 25th, hearing date.
Is that his address?
Is this for the zoning board, sir?
Sir, there's an agenda on the back of the room. If you want to check the agenda, you can see which, is that your address or the address of the petition?
That's my address.
Well, no, 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 yeah, yeah. That's your address. No, that, it's in regards to a petition that would be, say, within 300 feet of your home. We mail out notices to everybody.
Oh.
So I'm not sure what it is, but if there's one of them, you can sit and listen, and if you have a comment on something to that effect, we'll be more than happy to hear from you later on. Okay. Let me clear the deck here for a moment.
I'll be one of the last two.
You can want to be a gentleman.
Captain York? I'm trying to figure out who that is.
I got ready in the captain's room.
Oh, no problem. Have a nice night. Bye now.
Sir, there's an agenda right there, sir. You don't have to go that far.
That's all right. That's all right.
Okay.
Kinda reminds me of the Rayham District Court yesterday morning. That was quite, that was quite a time. All right. Moving right along. The next petition is petition 5076, Michael and Faith Sullivan. Property location is 11 Buckwood Drive, South Yarmouth, Mass. They're in an R-40 zoning district and the APD. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2, sub-paragraph 2, and/or variance from sections 203.5 for side setback relief to add a 24-by-35 garage to replace the existing carport. Michael and Faith Sullivan in the room? Come on up.
Very well. Good, and you?
Good. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Michael Sullivan.
Faith Sullivan.
Faith Sullivan? Okay. All right. I have a plot plan here from Ryder and Wilcox and a drawing depicting to show a garage. Go ahead and tell us what you're thinking. I think it's kinda self-explanatory what you wanna do here.
Well, we live in Norton, Mass, and we plan on retiring here.
Okay.
I've got a couple of older cars. The carport's great, but it's not a garage. And for us to move here, we really need to build a garage.
Okay. So you want to get more than one car in the garage? You get, I noticed it's a 35-foot-deep garage. That's pretty deep for a garage. Yeah.
Not 100% sure if I'm gonna go 35 feet, but that's what the survey people told me I could do.
All right. Okay. All right. So you're seeking a special permit here tonight, 'cause you're gonna need a little relief on the sideline.
Or a variance, which is probably what it is.
Well, let me take a look at this now. Yep. Mm-hmm. Um, let me just take a look at your plot plan real quick here. Is this in our 40 zoning district?
Yes.
Okay, so you need 20 feet on your sideline setback.
Right.
Right now, you have more than 20 feet. It appears that you comply with zoning on all four sides of your home. Okay? So you want to create a new nonconformity. Your house already had a nonconformity, and you extended it. You could probably do it by way of special permit, but I think you're gonna need a variance. You did check off you wanted variance relief, so that's okay. So I think that's how we're gonna have to proceed tonight. Okay?
All right, yeah.
All right? I think if you cut that back to within 20 feet of your sideline, just so you know, you wouldn't even have to be here. You'd be able to build this as a matter of right. But you want it, what are you going across on that? 24-wide?
24-wide, yeah.
Okay, okay. So you're gonna get a true double, two-car garage there, yeah, with plenty of room to open doors. Okay. All right, well, we'll proceed on the variance. Do you have anything else you want to add at this time?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Dolores did ask a question about the elevation. The elevation will be no higher than the existing home.
Okay. All right. And...
So like, the building commissioner asked me if I was building a skyscraper when I spoke to him, and I told him no.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I hear he likes skyscrapers. Um, all right, okay. Jay, do you have any questions?
I have a couple. The sketch that you provided for what I think you're planning on doing, this would be the addition, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's a door, and then there's the garage next to it, so the entrance door? Is that how it's...
Entrance door to go into the garage and then a garage door.
I'm a little concerned about, we don't really like to give the, you know, take away the side setbacks, and I think the house next door is pretty close to the side already. Is it possible that you could put that door on the side of the garage and just shrink, shrink the, shrink it back two feet?
I could.
I mean, that would be my preference, based on what you have here.
Well, if he does that, he doesn't need to be here.
Yeah, if you do that, you don't even need to come to us. You can just do it through the, through the town, because it's a standard lot, so I'm a little concerned. You don't usually give the, get, want to have new variances, and I'm not sure that you qualify for it, so that's the issue.
I think it was, not to interrupt, but our home in Norton, we have a mudroom, so, and we have a little Yorkshire terrier, so I think we were thinking to go in and out of the house.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. That's, that's, we didn't really...
I understand, but it'd be nice to be able to do that, but it's an issue with a variance. I'm not sure you qualify for a variance, and that's the issue.
Right.
So, but I don't, I don't have any other questions. I think, you know, I think there's an option if you have to, if you still want it, I think there's an option to do it without even having to ask for a variance, but I'll wait and see what everybody else says.
But would that give me the 24 feet?
Twen, uh... Well, no. I mean, I'm going by what you have here. You have a door, you have a double garage door, plus you have a, an entrance.
Right.
So if you take that out, I'm assuming you can bring, bring the door for the garage over at least a couple of feet. Most doors are like three and a half to three feet wide.
Right.
So you should have enough to be able to move the garage over and, and move the wall over a couple of feet if you did it that way, and then have an entrance through the garage side.
Do you know what size door that is you're gonna put in there? How wide it is?
I would imagine it's a normal door. What are they, 30 inches?
That depends. You could have a 2.6, 2.8, 3.0. It depends, but I mean, I would think you'd, I would think you'd need at least a 2.8 door there. That's generally what you would. 3Os are generally for front doors.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have for questions.
Okay. All right. Anthony, you have any questions?
I don't. I agree that I think it's, the variance is what they have to go through under our bylaws, and in terms of the conditions, it's, it's, I don't know if it qualifies. I think it's gonna be a challenging one, as discussed. So if there are alternatives that would be available to you that you think you could live with, that don't require zoning board approval or relief, that may be an avenue you want to pursue in this regard.
Barbara, you have thoughts?
No, I think Jay's suggestions is a good one.
John?
So would 22 feet be acceptable to you? I mean, would that, would you be able to get your cars in there and...
Well, the reason why I'm here is I really wanted the 24 feet.
Because that's the issue right now, is the width. A, you know, that, 22 feet, it'd be, you know, perfect. So, thinking about it.
See, if you're already invading that lot line, okay, that sideline setback, let's say you went into it a few inches, then you'd actually qualify for a special permit because it'd be an alteration or extension. But what you're doing here is you have, you're conforming on all setbacks. So what you're doing is creating a brand-new nonconformity that wasn't there before. So that's why I think you need a variance. Well, in order for you to prevail here with five people sitting, you need four votes in the affirmative. It sounds to me like you may have two that are a no vote here. If that was the case, I'm not sure how the other three of us would vote. But a 3-2 doesn't win. It's gotta be at least four to one, and it sounds to me like you don't have the requisite support for this petition. So if we did take a vote and you didn't win, you couldn't come back for two years on a similar petition. Now, what you could do is, well, I think the problem is, is I don't think there is support for a variance, so I think what you're gonna need is one foot, four inches. That's how much you're going into the setback.
Right.
I think what I'd probably suggest is go back to your designer. What's that?
It's 1.6. According to this, that's the application.
I got 18.8.
Yeah.
You need 20, right?
You do.
Isn't that 1.4?
They were asking for 1.6. That's all I was saying.
Oh, okay. Well, your plot plan says you need 1.4, but it's either 1.4 to 1.6. There's not much room. Unfortunately, I don't think you do meet the criteria for a variance. I would probably suggest you go back to your designer and see if there's a way. I don't think you're gonna get the, you can push it right up to the lot line, okay? So you could have 24...
22 and a half, about?
You'd be almost 22 and a half wide. I mean, that's, that's pretty good width. You're gonna have depth, too.
Right.
How many cars you gonna try to get in there?
Three.
Oh, I think you could get three cars in there. I think you could get three cars in there with 22. I mean, what size cars you're talking?
It's a 1942 Turtur that we have, so he loves, you know, car shows and...
Is that a big car? Is that a good-sized car? Got a good-sized car?
It's not all that big, but...
Okay, the, the older cars are bigger.
Yeah, well, this is not like a big boat.
Okay.
It's a '44 Ford, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Two-door, and then, you know, we both have SUVs.
Not oversized.
No, 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 most of the cars, it's surprising, when you put them in a garage, how much space you have. Cars aren't really as big as they used to be. it's up to you, we could, we can have a discussion and take a vote, but I don't know that you're gonna win tonight, so I don't really want to foreclose your options in the future. Would you like to withdraw your petition without prejudice and go back to the drawing board?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to see what, what the options are from him, yeah.
Yeah, if you can play around with it and then go back to, just go back to the building department, if it's not, if it's not over 20 feet, I mean, if you have the 20 feet, you're good.
Matter of right, yeah, you don't even need to come to us.
Correct, so...
You know, at, at 32 feet to your real lot line, what's the R. 40? 20 on the R. 40 setbacks?
Yeah, I have it right here.
20, I think, on your real lot line?
Yeah.
So you could actually go back a little bit more, too, you know? But I know you're looking for width.
Yeah.
But that's more important, yeah.
Reason I was looking for the width, like, you know, you want to open the doors in the wintertime, vacuum your car out, that type of thing. You know, my garage at home is much bigger, but, you know, I know, we're downsizing is what we're doing.
No, I understand, I understand.
I'm already retired, my wife's retiring soon, and we were kind of planning on moving here.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I certainly understand it. Unfortunately, as a board, we're charged with, you know, upholding the purpose and intent of the bylaws, the town meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, so it kind of ties our hands a little bit. So what do you want to do? Do you want to withdraw it right now and go back to the drawing board?
Oh, we'd have to wait two years, right?
Well, if we, if we give you a negative vote, and I don't think you're gonna win. If I thought you had a chance, I'd say, you know, stay in the battle, but I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, with that?
Yeah, I guess we withdraw.
Okay, is anybody prepared to make a motion to allow them to withdraw the variance relief without prejudice?
I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, got a motion made by Jay.
I'll second.
Seconded by John to withdraw the variance request without prejudice. Do we have a similar motion to withdraw the request for special permit without prejudice?
I'll move to withdraw the, the special permit without prejudice.
Okay, Anthony made a motion to withdraw the special permit without prejudice, second to that motion?
I'll second.
John seconds the motion. Okay, we didn't vote on the first one yet, did we?
No.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the variance right now. All those in favor of supporting the withdrawal of the variance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. All those in favor of allowing them to withdraw the request for special permit without prejudice, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none. You're all set. Wish you the best of luck, and I'm sorry we couldn't give you that extra foot tonight.
I think we could work it out, though.
Okay.
I do, listening to you.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
The original plot plan, I went with a 22 garage. But unfortunately, it was over two years old, planned. So I had to pay again to get this one done. So am I gonna have to...
Hey, to get another one done to get the 22?
Yeah.
Why don't you ask the building department? They, they, that would be at their discretion, because at 22, you don't have to come back here. You're gonna, you're gonna conform to the setbacks, you just go pick up your building permit.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next matter on our petition is Matthew White doing businesses Holiday LLC. Property location 35 and 41 Industrial Park Road, West Jarmeth, Mass. It's in a B3 and APD zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 202.5 for B3 use to allow boarding up to 40 dogs. How are you? Come on up, sir. Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Matthew White.
Matthew White, okay. All right, Matthew, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
We are looking, we've been, this is our 10th year in business down in that location. We are looking for a special permit for boarding for our clients. We were unaware that we did not have that permit when we opened 10 years ago. So that's why we're here today, to give that square way.
Are you familiar with the 2006 decision regarding this?
So I heard that the permit was withdrew. We purchased it from a woman.
That's the 2007 permit.
Okay.
The 2007 permit, you came in requesting boarding, and it was with, well, whoever...
That wasn't us, yes, no, that was the previous owner, yes.
But go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
No, 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 that's all, that's all I was gonna say.
Well, the 2006 permit, to tell you how long I've been around, I was here, and I remember when you guys came in, and it may not have been you. But everybody was very nice, and there was definitely support for it. But one of the criterias was that you could not board any animals overnight. You had 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. Only daytime service will be provided, no overnight kennels service, or veterinarian or grooming service will be offered. The center will be limited to no more than 50 dogs at that time, and two to four employees on site. How many employees do you have right now?
Total, we have 13 employees, this is the landlord, the owner of the building.
Good evening.
Good evening, have a seat.
Sorry, I'm late, I just thought we were number three. Wow.
Well, we move things along here.
Guess so.
I gotta get home. Okay, how many employees do you have right now?
So we have 11 full-time employees, five, yes.
Okay. And you still open seven days a week?
Correct, yes.
All right. how many dogs are you boarding presently overnight?
We, I mean, we average now maybe 11 dogs a night. That's, that's our average as of right now.
And what type of mitigation measures, if any, do you have in place to dispose of the waste?
So the first thing we do is we have all wastes removed from the property. We bag all feces, it's then put in the dumpster and taken away. Any urine, we don't have cement, we have that really nice epoxy, so nothing absorbs into the floor. Everything is soaked up with paper towels and then mopped up, again, bagged, put in the dumpster and removed from the property.
Okay. So the dogs are all self-contained within the building?
Yes, I even have a drawing, I didn't turn it in early, but I have kind of the layout of the building and the kennels and everything, I'm not sure if you want that.
You'd like to bring that up, we could, I'll take it, I can't give it back, can we have that?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna enter that as an exhibit. It'll be exhibit one. Okay, let me take a look at this, and then I'll pass it around. And how many, how many? It's just dogs, right?
Yes, yeah, no, no other animals.
And on a typical day, excuse me, ladies, can you keep it down, ask somebody to be quiet?
Excuse me, Mr. White, could you actually get closer to the microphone and...
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
She's not listening to me. So how many animals right now do you have on the premises?
Correct, so on an average day, we have about 23 dogs, and that's for daycare. And then in the evening, maybe four dogs. We're averaging, a night during the week, 11 dogs, about an average a month right now for boarding. Averaging 23 to 20 dogs a day for daycare.
So why do you need a special permit for 40?
Because in the summer and during COVID, our numbers were incredibly increased. We brought on more staff, we didn't want to go above that 40 mark, but we wanted to make sure that we had that just in case for any, any type of emergencies or any other pandemics or anything like that that broke out again. We wanted to have that in place. We, we don't ever plan on taking 40 dogs, but we wanted to have that in place, but we're not dead-set on that number by any means.
And, and can, and you have overnight staff, correct?
We do not have overnight staff, we do have a very high-tech security camera system that goes not only to our telephones, but we have a hard-wired monitor in my office. We also have another building on the property that we use for training, and so everything goes in there as well. But we do have a staff member that stays late past that 7:00 PM, they're there till usually about 9:00 PM. And then we have somebody as well come in early, early, before we open.
Now, when you board the dogs, what size of the enclosures that you keep them in?
Yep, so in the, on the sheet, the kennels are roughly four feet wide, five feet long, and six feet high, and it's a solid steel, not a chain link, but a welded steel cage. It has one access door in and out. They have an elevated bed, like I said, the floors are that really nice epoxy, so it's not cement. And they have access to water all night.
Okay, okay. And so typically, how many feedings do you give the dogs?
So the dogs generally get two feedings, we do have younger dogs that'll get three feedings a day. The feedings are at 6:00 AM, 12 at 6:00 PM. Sometimes we will feed early, depending on the amount of dogs we have.
What do you feed them?
The owners supply their food, we keep them on their diet.
Keep them on their diet?
Correct, yes.
So some dogs will eat soft food, some dogs will eat hard food, some dogs will eat a combination?
Yep, the owners will supply that food, and we'll, we'll just follow the instructions and give it to them as, as required.
Now, one of the issues that we have here is, I have a memo from the town of Jarmeth, I'm just gonna read into the record, and then we'll talk about it. This is from Laurie Razula, Water and Wastewater Superintendent. On behalf of the Jarmeth Water Department, I would like to request additional information related to the proposed expansion of dog boarding kennels at Holiday LLC, located at 35 and 41 Industrial Park Drive in West Jarmeth. The property is located within the groundwater protection district due to many drinking water wells located along Higgins Crawl Road. One well is less than 650 feet from 35 and 41 Industrial Park Drive. Therefore, handling of animal waste on the site is a water quality concern. I'm not familiar with Holiday's current practice for animal waste, or if the additional kennels would impact the current practices. I respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals obtain Holiday's animal waste handling plan for current and proposed kennels for water department review prior to approval of their zoning relief. Do you have any written plan, or is it just what you just told me?
No, I don't have it in writing, but what I just told you, yes.
Okay. All right, do you have any, so you said that the urine goes onto a special catch area?
Well, the floors, yeah, they're, they're that epoxy, so it's not cement, it won't absorb into the floor, it stays on the surface, and then we soak it up with paper towels, we then mop it up, and everything is then put into trash bags, and then removed into a dumpster and removed from the property.
No dogs are outside?
No, we do have an outdoor area, and that is turfed, and it sits on about a foot and a half of T-base. And that's what they go, when they're outside, that's what they're on.
Okay, and does that leach down into the ground?
It does, yes.
Well, I think that might be problematic, because you're in the APD, okay? If you weren't in the APD, which is the Aquifer Protection District, then that would, I'm not saying that it's a deal breaker, I'm saying it's a concern, okay?
I guess my only question, not to interrupt, but if we are already in existing daycare, and the dogs are out there during the day, they're not out there in the evening at all. They're in their own, they're inside the building, so there would be no urine. It would be the same kind of protocol during the day as daycare would be. The only difference be, they would be inside in the evening.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna pass the baton here to the other members. Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
It's more of a process question, but in terms of, you know, how you came to understand that you're needing the special permit, and when you came to know and how you came in front of us, just in terms of the process on that, that'd be helpful to understand.
How did we find out?
Yes.
We received a letter from the town, I, I was, from the building commissioner. I was under the assumption that there was another person in town looking for a permit for boarding, and through that, our name was brought up, and that, that brings us here today. So we received the letter, and then immediately went down to speak with the building commissioner, and got the application, turned it in to get here as soon as possible.
And in terms of, you know, we, we know this as residents, but it's helpful to have in terms of when the board is reviewing this. Could you talk about what the neighboring properties are like, kind of the, the area that you're in?
Yeah, we're in an industrial park, our nearest neighbor is Ford Diamond Electric, they're lighting an electric supply warehouse. Across the street, our nearest neighbor is a fencing supply warehouse as well. And the owner of the building, sitting next to me, Lou Sturgis, he owns the bay directly behind us, which is currently empty, so there's, there's no neighbor there. And then across our parking lot is nothing, those are empty lots. I believe they're owned by the town, so there, there's nothing that can be built on there.
We ask because as part of the special permit process, we always have to look at if there's a significant or a detriment to the intent of the bylaws and derogation from what those bylaws are, and it's helpful to have, just from, for the record, what an analysis of the neighborhood is. I don't have anything further.
Okay. Barbara, you have some questions?
Um, you're looking for boarding for up to 40 dogs, have you ever reached that capacity?
No, we haven't, and that's why I said we're...
During COVID, you never reached that capacity?
Correct, no, that, for safety, I wouldn't allow that many. We just want, that was kind of the number we tacked on there, only because it said we were rated for 50 dogs, that was the original permit. But no, that number's not set in stone at all.
Okay, I, do you hose down these kennels, or...
Absolutely, yeah, our cleaning, most of our money is spent on cleaning products, and that is what we are doing constantly all day, so it's not even just a one time a day. The kennels cleaned at least three to four times a day.
And what, what cleaning products do you use?
So we use nontoxic, a lot of Lysol, we use a micro, I can't think of it offhand, it's an antimicrobial that's used when cleaning, like mold and things like that, so it kills bacteria, but it's non-harmful, nontoxic, non-corrosive to the dogs. We do use a very minimal amount of bleach, but we do use bleach and things like that, lots of, lots of hot water and soap and things like that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Barbara?
Microban, sorry, that's what it was called.
John?
Just one question, you have 13 employees?
Yes.
You may have said this, but how many are there at any one given time?
So there's at least five there every day. So it would be three to four on the floor, and usually one to two in the front office area greeting clients and bringing the dogs in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Jay?
There's a, just wanted to go back to the original approval that was given on the 6th. It, it talks about the outdoor area as being a non-permeable material. You're saying before it's not non-permeable, right now it's...
I'm not sure I understand the question.
The outdoor surface that the dogs play in, the outdoors...
So before us, it was just a peystone, sitting on top of just the ground, we... Yeah, on, on top of the asphalt. When, when we purchased it, we had that removed, we, we installed an actual professional outdoor turf.
But is there a permeable, is there a non-permeable surface below that area? No.
I know that when they, I know that when they do it, whatever they line it with under that, I'm assuming it's, it's like a heavy industrial plastic.
Just, let me just read what the permit allowed. It says, it says they will construct an outdoor fenced-in area for dogs to be located adjoining the existing overhead door, as shown in the revised plot plan. It will be enclosed with a six-foot stockade fence. It will, as required by the health department, have a paved base covered by an impervious liner, covered with a layer of soil. All animal waste, both within the fenced area and within, within the building, will be carefully collected and stored and disposed of on sight. That's why I'm asking.
Yes, we have, we're the same thing, the only thing we've changed is we've put turf instead of peystone.
So you have some type of impermeable space?
Yes, there's a six...
Bottom line is, the health department doesn't even want the outside area to be, you know, to have any permeation of a, of urine or whatever.
Gotcha.
So you have that, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
You just testified before that it leaches into the ground on your outside area.
So I mean, leaches into that T-base that, that's right under it, yes.
And where does it go? Does it collect?
I mean, I'm assuming that's where it stops, it's over a foot and a half thick.
If no one's emptying it on a regular basis, it's going right into the ground.
That's basically what the health department's concerned about, so...
Well, we didn't change, so we didn't change whatever the requirements were when, when they got the original permit. And so the outdoor area, whatever it's sitting on, the only thing we added was turf and T-base.
I understand, but, you know, the first thing is the health department's gonna have to approve this.
Sure.
And they're asking for a plan.
Okay.
And the plan's going to include what they asked for the first time.
Okay.
Actually, that's the water department, I don't think we have a health department memo.
Okay.
But we will talk about that, and I agree with your concerns, Ed.
So all I'm... So all I'm letting you know is you're probably going to have to have an impermeable surface there in order to get this approved.
Okay.
I, I would think, because that, that was clearly identified before. So that's just one condition I think that will be there. In addition to that, they want to have a plan for waste, so that's all I had. It's, I think that's the big concern, is any kind of waste protecting the, you know, aquifer, aquifer area. So that's going to be the focus of anything I think we have for conditions.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the board? Is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, no, I think I'm-
I'm, being the landlord, I, I think he's been an excellent tenant and he, you know what, he's very conscientious, never had any trouble with anybody, Ford Diamond, everybody seems to respect and appreciate the business that he's brought to the town. And I know, I'm, I'm obviously happy to have him there, but I, I just think he does an excellent job for, I mean, he's professional. And for what he's doing, I don't think he's asking the board anything. He assumed that having a license entitled him to do it. I had no idea what was, he was doing, so I had asked him and he goes, I have a license from the town for, to board and, you know what, I never, I assumed it was, had been accepted by the town. And then I got the letter in December saying he was in violation and I was a little perplexed at how that could be.
Well, just, just understand that the big issue here is we're trying to protect the drinking water for the town.
Oh, believe me, I'm, I have a well there, so I understand.
That's all.
No, I, I totally agree with that. So I'm just saying that the original, I was here with Mark Dewey, I don't know, 15 years ago or whatever it was, when we, we came before the board and we, we recognized that that was an issue, but whatever was accepted by the town back then, he has only augmented the safety and like the upgrading of the surface in the building by doing the epoxy. He spent a lot of money in that space to, to control the animal, whatever, the feces and urine, whatever. The outside thing, the only thing I know that he did was put the T base on top of what was there and then put a very expensive turf, like a, almost like a super-thick astroturf, so the dogs would be, they wouldn't hurt their feet on the pea stone. And that's, that's the only thing I know that's transpired there in the intervening 14 years or whatever it's been since I was here with Mark.
Well, he's, he's not doing anything wrong.
No.
Except he's not allowed to board dogs overnight.
Right, well, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
We know that, yeah.
Yeah. And like I said, I, I assumed that the, him getting the license from the, whoever at the town was issuing the license meant it was okay and then, hold, you know.
Does, does your license say that you can board dogs?
It doesn't say anything either way. It was a kennel license, we didn't, we just assumed purchase, and when we purchased the building, we were, purchased it as a daycare boarding facility.
Not doing any grooming of any dogs, is there?
No, no grooming or anything like that, no.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, does anybody here that's in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Do you have anything else you want to add at this time?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to close the hearing to public input, begin a discussion with the board. Jay, what do you think?
I don't have a problem with the overnight, you know, in, in allowing it, as long as it follows what both the health department and the water department are expecting. So, you know, if they can, if they can, they can get approval from those two units, I'm, I'm okay. I think it's, I think it's all right. But that's about my thing.
All right. John?
Well, so, will the final decision be with the water department?
No.
So?
The final decision is with us.
Okay. So are we going to ask him to install some impervious substance?
Well, I, I think those are things that we should talk about because first off, his outside kennel right now is in violation of the 2006 decision, as well as the boarding of the dogs, so he's got two issues. So he has urine going into the groundwater. I'm not sure about the inside of the building. I think we, what I think we may want to do is have you get yourself an engineer and have him design something for the outside so that's impervious, so it can't leach into there. You may need some type of collection basin that's emptied.
Again, we, we didn't take away from what was already there, all we did was add to, on top of it.
Let me, then let me make it simpler. The person you bought it from wasn't in compliance with that.
Okay.
The, the board of health could walk in and shut that down if they chose to do that. All right. No, I don't think they're going to do that. We're not going to recommend they do that, but you're right on top of the aquifer protection district and you're right on top of wells, so we are charged with protecting the groundwater.
Absolutely.
So we're going to need a plan per the water department. They want a animal waste disposal plan in writing, so you'll need to write that up, submit it back to us. Then we're going to need something that's designed for the outside kennel that's impervious and how you're going to collect that and then take it and dispose it off-site, because all waste has to be disposed off-site. Urine and feces. I would also like to see, have some type of certification from an engineer as to the inside of your building. You say that you're spraying everything down, you're wiping everything up and you're spraying everything down. Are you then mopping everything up?
No, she said spray. We, I didn't say spray anything.
You said hose it down?
No, 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 we didn't use those words at all. No, we, we use Lysol, we, we clean it with cleaning products. We're not in there with hoses at all, no.
Another thing I want from you, I want a list of all cleaning products that you use in the building. That needs to be a list prepared. We're going to hand that over to the board of health for their opinion on that. So we're going to have to continue this matter. We're going to have to have you do a few things. In terms of, this is my own personal opinion, I'll let others speak. In terms of boarding the dogs, I don't have a problem with that, really. I think you've been running a good business there and your predecessor ran a very good business there for a lot of years. We've never heard any complaints from you and I think there's a need for that. I think people go away, they want to bring their dogs over someplace. Not only, they have a need for, but they want to bring them someplace that they feel safe and comfortable taking care of their dogs and that's very important. And I think you're probably doing a pretty good job because you've had a good business going there for a long time. So we're not trying in any way to disrupt your business, but we have a duty to make sure the groundwater is fully protected and that you're in compliance, like everybody else that's in the APD. We're not just picking on you, any business that comes around, okay? Including probably Ford Diamond Electric, somebody asked them when they built on that. Not that they sell any cleaning products or anything, so that really wouldn't apply, but you are using cleaners and we need a list of what you use and we're going to submit that to the health department, just for their review and for their okay. You're probably using just basic household cleaners, it's not really going to make a difference, okay? But we do need a list of that, so, do you want to write this down? You need a pen?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, let's get him a pen, yeah, yeah, come on. Yeah, yeah.
I can always follow up with an email, too.
Yeah, and, and you can follow up with Dolores, too, okay? So she'll, any, anything you need, just give her a call. Trust us when we say she does a good job. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
She certainly does with us, that's for sure. Okay, so the first thing we're going to need is we're going to need a, a waste disposal plan, all right? Just write something up, because the water department wants that, all right? Just like you explained to us, you know, you have that, you bag it all up, you take it off-site and remove it, okay? Just, so just so they have that. Second thing we're going to need is we're going to need a list of all cleaners that you use, all right? And we want an explanation as to how you clean the inside of the kennel on the inside of the building, how that's cleaned on a regular basis and what is actually used to Third thing we're going to need is we're going to need some type of design for your outside kennel to show how nothing is permeating into the ground. So I think you might want to talk to an engineer about that and have him design something for you.
Got any suggestions?
What do you have on the, the inside? What did you say that?
The inside, you get that, but I, I don't know if that's going to-
Work on the outside?
Well, it might work on the outside, but I think-
Nothing's getting through it.
And-
Couldn't be able to clean it.
Well, what, what you may have to do is design something that has a little bit of a pitch off to the center and then has some type of a drain that might have some type of a sleeve with a bucket in it, that you can just come and pull a cap off and pull it out and throw another one in, but every time a dog goes to the bathroom, it runs down and goes into that, okay?
I like the idea, but the, we, we're talking an area that's 50 by 50 and so-
Outside?
Yeah.
The outside kennel area is 50 by 50?
It's not kennels where they're stored, they only go out there to play.
To play.
When, when we're cleaning the inside area, the dogs go outside to play.
Well, I got to tell you, let me just check something.
Yeah, they're not, we don't, we don't kennel them outside, we don't even have kennels outside that the dogs are, are in. It's two large play areas that they're, when we're cleaning the building, we put the dogs outside until the area's dry and then they come back in. And the outside also has playground equipment that they play on. We don't put them out there, that's not where we want them to go, to go to the bathroom or to spend the day. They only go out there, kind of run around and in between. We have large indoor play areas as well that they're staying in.
Have you ever read this decision?
We, we read it with the building commissioner, yeah.
Okay. Can we make a copy of this decision for him to take tonight?
Is there something that we're missing?
Well, yeah.
What I read to you before.
But he just read to you. You're in violation of it, this 50, 50 by whatever area, we can't collect all this stuff, they're all running around. They're all going to the bathroom, right into the water table. We can't have that.
No, but what, what, the original decision was, there was a liner put underneath.
Now, what the original decision said, it's impervious. Now, we'll send somebody over to inspect it to see if it's impervious. If it's not, we're going to have to shut it down. Why don't you take a look at it and get an engineer so we don't have to do that?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. And an engineer, if you want me to recommend somebody, it's, I mean, you could call the, who do I use over there in Yarmouth, but?
They could ask the building department.
Well, there's engineers in town, you know, we've, we've got plenty of them. Hold on here a second. These are not, these, do I have the original decision here for them? Somewhere in here.
Mr. Frapery, would you mind?
No, I'm looking for their, I'm looking for your-
If one of the board members wouldn't mind giving up one of their copies?
No.
I gave, he has this.
You have that already?
He does, yeah.
Oh, no, I have the decision.
I can give this to him if you want, I could give this to him.
You can take it from my packet there, too.
I mean, you, you should have one, just so you know what your responsibilities are. I mean, it's, when you say I just read it with the building department, there's more than just-
This paragraph here.
Requirements, yeah.
We purchased it under the assumption-
Well, you know what, you know what a lawyer table, an assumption? It's not a defense, okay?
It must be a case.
And maybe it is, if, if you can find out if it is, you know, if it does qualify, then just, you know, just write that up and let people know.
Sure. What, do they come right out of the building and run right in?
Yeah, there's a, a large garage door that they can go out as well.
Right there, you open up an overhead door and then they come right out?
Yep.
Good system, yeah. Okay. This is what, apparently what you submitted or your predecessor submitted. That's it right there, that's the original design, that's the fencing. Well, you know, again, we're, we're not trying to give you hard time about your business, but we've got a concern with the water, so-
Absolutely.
We need you to get an engineer over there, they're in the yellow pages, just pick one. We're not going to recommend anybody per se, but there's plenty of guys around town. They could come over there and take a look at what the decision requires and give you some options, but it will have to be addressed. I don't know what's underneath there. Is there asphalt underneath there right now?
Yeah. And then the, the original plan was, there was the, the original asphalt parking lot that was there and then there was a tarp that was laid down, like a, you know.
Well, the original plan doesn't talk about asphalt and tarps, okay? The original, I mean, the decision doesn't reference that.
Right, I'm just looking at what the, what this says right here and it said, but I just know that that's what was done at the time, 15 years ago, to address the issue and I don't know if it was ever inspected, but that's the way it was.
Well, I guess you just gave us a reason to come over and inspect you, huh? So, we may ask the board of health to take a ride by and inspect it, but in the first instance, what we're going to do is we're going to ask you to get those three things, all right? And we'd like some type of determination by an engineer and if you don't, you don't have to, but if you, if you choose not to do that, then we're going to have to make our own decision as to how we're going to address that. And I, for one, if I think that that's permeable over there, I'm not going to agree to have it, I'll, I'll recommend to the building department that you're in violation of the zoning and ask them to send you a violation notice and the board of health may follow up and come over there and take some action on their own. And I can tell you right now, they don't want to do it, we don't want to do it, okay? You know what we want to do? We want to see you continue to run a nice, successful business with boarded dogs. I don't think we have a problem with that, but we need you to work with us and address those issues, okay? How long do you need to get those things together?
A month or two, anyway, by the time-
No, 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 it's going to take you a little while, especially if you need an engineer over there.
I mean, at least 90 days, if that'd be-
We'll give you 60. 60? Do we have something 60 days out, Dolores? Well, first of all, hold off here a second. When I say we'll give you 60, I want to talk to the board about that, okay? I want some feedback from the board as to how long we think is a reasonable time to give the petitioner to get these items that we need together and for them to report back to us. Anthony, your thoughts?
I think in the, there's two components to this. It's the information that we would then pass on to the board of health and get an opinion from them. 60 days for that is absolutely reasonable. I'm sure they can provide that to us soon and the board of health will get back to us soon. But in terms of an engineer being able to acquire one, if they so choose to have one, 60 days is, is tight, but I think it's feasible. There's certainly enough qualified people in town that will do it and can do it quickly. We're not asking for a significant ask from an engineer here, but 60 days might be tight. I think that's a reasonable expectation to get everything done and if they have to come back in 60 days and ask for more time or a different accommodation, we can talk about it at that time.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, I agree with that, you know, try to do it in 60 days so you can move this along, but if it's not feasible to get the report back in that timeframe- to get the report back in that timeframe, you know, we'd be agreeable to push it out. If you can't get it done in 60 days.
I'll agree. That's fine with me.
Jay?
Yeah, I'm fine. If they get it earlier than that, I just suggest they get it in so it can get reviewed by the health department. That would be a good thing, too.
Well, the waste disposal and the cleaning products, that should be fairly quick for you to do. We'd like you to submit that, because we're gonna submit those to the water department and the health department, and if they raise a red flag, that may be something that you have to address, okay? Sooner... We don't want you to come back in 60 days and say, "Oh, by the way, you just gave us this yesterday, and we gave it to the Board of Health, and they haven't reviewed it," or "They have a problem," or what have you. I'm not saying they're gonna, but the sooner the better. I do agree the engineering, depending on how busy the engineers are. But I'm sure you can get somebody to come over there and take a look at it, and if you need some type of new design, which you may, have them do an inspection as to what you got right there. We don't even know what's underneath there right now. And they may have... You may have an impervial, permeable surface...
Impervial? Impervious.
Impervious, thank you.
Impervious.
An impervious situation over there right now...
Yeah.
Where an engineer may say to you, "Look, we can solve this problem by you putting a drain here, a drain there, and pitching here and there, so it collects." Like I said in the beginning, it's a big area, but you may be able to solve this, okay? Relatively easily. Or you may choose not to do the engineer, and then we'll take some other route. So what do we have for 60 days out?
March 28th. Would that work?
March 28th. What is the hearing just before that one?
March 14th.
And what's the one right after that one? April what?
10th.
Oh, April 11th.
11th.
I don't think March 28th is gonna be good for me. Does the board have any opposition to going out till April 11th?
No.
Anthony?
No. No.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? We'll give you a little extra time. We'll go out to April 11th, all right? No one's issuing any violations to you right now, right? They just said you gotta come before. Okay, so we don't want you to... As long as you're not getting fined or anything, we don't wanna ask that. Okay. All right, so we're gonna continue this matter until April 11th. We're gonna need you to sign an extension agreement right over here with Dolores, and we'll see you back there.
Vote.
We're gonna take a vote.
Thank you.
We need a...
One question I guess I was gonna ask. I mean, if they get the engineering review, and I agree on the timeframe, but if they get an engineering view that says it meets that requirement, they just need to provide us with that documentation.
That's all. We want the documentation.
If it meets it, just have them write up that it meets it based on what's required and get that to us, too. That would even make it simpler. But if not, we have to figure out a way to get it there.
Okay, so somebody prepared to make a motion to continue it till April 11th?
I'll make a motion to continue. Day 11th?
Second.
Second. Jay made a motion, seconded by John. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll see you on April 11th. If you have any questions, you need anything, call Dolores, okay?
Dolores.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice night. All right, here.
Dismissed. I want to dismiss.
Excuse me, sir?
I want to dismiss myself. Can I ask one question?
Sure.
The word "varian," what does that mean?
Word what?
Varian. What does it mean?
Variance.
What does variance mean? That means you're deviating from the bylaw. But the bylaw says you can't do it. We're giving you permission to break the rules by issuing you a variance. Actually, a special permit allows you to deviate from the bylaw. That's what a special permit is. When you want a variance, that means you're allowed to break the rules under certain criteria. And that's in our bylaw. Okay? All right, so we're gonna move...
That's the first time I hear the word. I want to know what this means.
Okay.
If I wanna do something, I wanna know exactly where I might be.
Okay, well, all right. All right, so we'll move right along here. The next petition is petition 5080. Wayne and Teresa Edwards, trustees of the Edwards Family Trust, 91 Pine Cone Road, Pine Cone Drive, I'm in South Yarmouth, 91 Pine Cone Drive, West Yarmouth. The city zoning district R-25, and the applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 subparagraph 2, or a variance from 203.5 for front setback relief to build a farmer's porch with 1 1/2 foot encroachment of porch. Somebody here on that matter? How are you tonight, gentlemen? Good. Come on up and have a seat. How you doing? Okay. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Wayne Edwards at 91 Pine Cone Drive.
Okay.
Paul Bettencourt.
Okay, so you're the contractor, you're the owner?
Right.
All right. So tell us a little bit about your petition here.
Right now, we're 35 feet off the front marker, so we're... We have five feet, which is legal to put a farmer's porch. We're asking for a foot and a half relief, just to make the farmer's porch a little bit deeper. That's basically it in a nutshell.
All right.
I'd ask a question. Sean, is this one of those corner lots? Does that... Is there an average in that regard that works out to make it?
Well, technically, you're talking about, I think, setback averaging.
Yeah.
Setback averaging is when you take the house to the left of you and the house to the right of you, and you average what their setbacks are. Now, I can tell you where that becomes beneficial to someone who's looking for front setback relief. If one neighbor is only 20 feet off the front setback, and the other one's 30, they're in compliance, then the setback average would be 25 feet.
Okay.
So in this case, if that was it, we could setback average them, and we could issue them a special permit. Here, however...
Is that one situation?
It is. This, they are creating a new nonconformity, however... They do not meet their rear setback, okay, currently. So I think this case would be an extension or alteration versus a brand-new nonconformity where there's already all conformity on all setbacks. If that were the case, they'd require a variance. Whereas there is one setback that is already in violation, and this is a legally pre-existing nonconforming structure, then I think we can grant them a special permit. Anybody not agree with that?
I agree.
Well, figured you'd agree, yeah.
I'm just looking at the... Just legally, standards, I think, were fine as a special permit only, given that kind of analysis.
Okay.
Which for the applicant's positioning, just so they understand, is a different standard than it is for a variance request. It's a different relief requirement, and easier, some might say.
Considerably. Most would say, yeah. Okay. So you're looking for special permit relief on front setback relief, though. So you were here before, right? We gave you special permit relief 'cause you're going up, you're putting on a dormer.
Correct.
Right. And so now you're coming back. Did you ask for this in the original, and you were... Did you withdraw this relief the first time? No, you didn't plan it. Okay. All right. Okay.
Teresa wanted the farmer's porch as an afterthought, sort of?
It's certainly dressed the house up nice. They look very nice on the two-story houses, yeah. You're in a nice spot over there. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go questions from the board. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, I kind of agree it would look... It would, you know, kinda make the front look distinctive. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So five feet doesn't work, or...
Well, we can do five feet legally. It's just Teresa would like a little bit more, so you can sit in an Adirondack chair, and somebody can walk in front of you. It just makes it aesthetically a little bit better.
Do we have anything for the houses on either side of them?
A little bit more.
What's the typical width of a standard?
Probably about six feet is typical.
You don't have an overhead. We don't have an assessor's map doing it.
It's about a half foot more than typical. Aesthetically makes the house look better with the farmer's porch.
Yeah, they're... Sure.
You know, those different colors that show them.
More usable and, you know...
It's the front relief that we're reluctant to grant, you know?
I see this one right here. He looks...
I was just wondering if... If something else might work.
I don't know what that is, but he's clearly set back.
Even six, six feet, no good. It's gotta be six and a half.
Oh, it just gives you that little extra bit to get by, you know?
Yeah.
And the kids and grandkids.
Well, I mean, I don't have any other questions. I mean, it's... It is or it isn't, you know?
It's really the building itself. Well, Anthony, do you have some questions?
I don't. I'm just trying to... I'm actually just looking to see if I can... I'll ask them. What are the properties on either side? How are they situated in terms of their setback? Can you give a little explanation? I'm familiar with the properties, and I know that... I think the one to the left doesn't have a front porch, correct?
No, but it looks like the building, if you're facing them on Pine Cone, it looks like their neighbor directly to the left is closer to the street than they are. However, the road curves there, so I don't know if they actually meet the 30 feet. It looks like they probably do, so it'd be hard to setback average that, 'cause the road turns. We can't setback average going the other way, 'cause that goes up Franklin Street. Oh, very nice, Jay. Yeah, it looks like he's 30 feet back. See, historically, this board has been very reluctant to give front setback relief, because when you look down a street in a laid-out subdivision, all the houses are supposed to be really uniformly set back. You can get away on the sides, and you can get away on the backs, 'cause people don't see those. But the front setback, you want to be conforming, 'cause you don't want one guy being 10 feet off the road, one guy being 40, one guy being 15. You know my point. So that's why, when we look at these, we, quite frankly, very seldom give front setback relief. The only time we do it is on corner lots, because on corner lots, you have two fronts and two sides. You don't have a real lot line, okay? So on this one right here, on yours, this over here on Franklin Street, that's a front setback. This is a front setback, too. Under the bylaw, you're required to be 30 feet back on both of those. Now, you're not... You're not 30 feet off this one. You're 27, okay? But you've been there, all right? You're legally pre-existing, nonconforming. Here, however, you are conforming, 'cause you're at 35. Now you wanna bring it down to 28, so you wanna... You're looking for two feet of relief.
28 and a half.
28 and a half. Okay. So you're looking for... Yeah, you're looking for a foot and a half of relief. And that would give you what size porch? Would you say six and a half?
Six and a half by 32.
Where's the parking for the house? Is it on the left side? Is that where the parking is? Is there a garage?
There's a circular driveway there.
Circular in front? Is that the only driveway?
There is a side.
There's a side. I thought there was.
Yes, see, they've already got... It's already been reduced on this side to 27. It can be reduced to 25. Well...
Just wondering if that...
Corner lots can be difficult to work with. They're... You're a little bit of a natural hardship to place a house and keep your side, and you keep all your setbacks. So it can be difficult, especially on these sized lots. I mean, you know, your lot's only 7,100, almost 7,200 feet, which is relatively small. There's a curved radius along the front. It's a public way. So you reduce it to 20 at the corner only. Well, you do have a radius on this. You could be reduced to 20 on that corner. Where do you park your cars?
In the front there. There's a curved circular driveway in the front.
Right, right, right. Okay, I know where, yeah.
There's no park... There's no garage on the lot? I can't remember.
No, couldn't. We couldn't put one on, 'cause that was... In the beginning was on the side, but obviously with the setbacks there as well.
Well, I think if we wanna rely on... 202.3... Says, "Corner lots are considered to have two front yard setbacks and two side yard setbacks. The front yard setback for a corner lot may be reduced to 25 feet to accommodate parking in the rear or side of the building. If the corner lot has a curved radius along the frontage," and this does, "on the public way, the front yard setback may be reduced to 20 feet at the corner only." Now, that's at the corner only. You're probably more than that. Looks like you probably got 30 at the corner. Or she parked in the front, you don't park on the side of the rear. I, for one, don't have a big problem with this. It's not... Do I think it's gonna look good? Yes. I think it's gonna dress the house up. I think it's gonna enhance the neighborhood. It's a nice area down there. I think it'd be beautiful. The question really revolves around where we, as a board, when we start offering front setback relief, I think we need to be careful. We need to look at these on a case-by-case basis. I think some of the reasons that we would consider saying yes to you is we do have the ability to get down to 25, and as low as 20 on the corner, but it's really based upon parking, although you have a big circular parking, so you could say that probably goes into some of your side. I think we could probably justify this and be consistent with the bylaw, given what he has right now. All right? All right, because he's still gonna maintain 28 and a half feet.
I do think too, if you look at, if you look at the two, the house to the left of them, it's actually the farmer's porch would probably line up with the front of that house.
That's another thing too. You do have a neighbor that is actually further in front, but the way that the, the, the street turns right there, he actually meets his 30 feet, so. But appearance-wise, which I think, again, getting back to, you need to have that appearance when looking down streets to make sure all the lot, the houses are pretty much set back the same. I think he would probably make it here, so. I do think if we granted him a special permit, I don't think it would be substantially more non-conforming than what is in the neighborhood of the surrounding zoning district or for this particular piece of property, so I, I think we could justify it under the bylaw. I'll wait to hear from others what they think. Anthony, what do you think?
I, I think you've nailed what my opinions are, is that I'm, as the board has said before, we're all pretty hesitant to allow variances of setbacks without special conditions as necessary. And I think the uniqueness of the corner lot, the location of the neighboring properties, the true de minimis nature of what the setback is asking for, the, the use here on a pre-existing non-conforming, the de minimis nature of how it'll become more non-conforming, I'm, I'm okay with. And I think it's an improvement. It's an improvement to the property. It's an improvement to the neighborhood. And, you know, for those purposes, it's, it should be welcome under the bylaw, even though it's technically against it. This is what the special permits are purposed for, for these types of occasions, and I'd be in favor.
Okay. John, what do you think?
I agree. It's a very small lot. It's not a lot he's looking for. And it certainly would enhance the home itself as well as the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, aesthetically, it'd be very nice and very tastefully done, yeah. Okay. Barbara, you in agreement?
I agree with all the comments. I think it's gonna look nice.
Okay. Jay?
I agree also. I think we used the word de minimis again.
Yeah, let's not get too crazy with that word de minimis, you know? That's gotta, that's gotta be used sparingly. I'm, I'm hearing that word too much lately. I think we're getting weak. That's just a joke, okay? All right.
No, I, I would support it. I, I think it does line up with the other house and it's not an overly, overly tough request. And it is a corner lot, which we always have issues with, so. I'm, I'm comfortable that there's, there's good logic for it.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve special permit for petition 5080 with no conditions.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Barbara seconded, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Now, you were here before, so you probably already know what the rules are. There's a 20-day appeal period after the decision is written and clocked in with the town clerk. So that may not happen tomorrow, so. Okay, we'll need a little while to... And then after you do that, take your special permit when Dolores gives it to you, take it over the registry of deeds, record it, and bring it back, so we, bring us back a copy if you would, okay? Now, you also have another form of relief, I think. Did you ask for variance relief too?
Yes.
Okay. We'd ask you to withdraw that request without prejudice. Would you be in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
A move that we permit them to withdraw the variance request without prejudice.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Anthony, seconded by Jay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That's allowed. Okay, gentlemen. Have a nice night.
Have a great night.
All right. Now, who's left? Okay, take care. All righty, bye-bye now. Ah, look who's back. Thank you. See you later. Have a nice night. All right, we're gonna go to petition 5070, Skyline Childcare. Gabriela Dos Santos Rigo, come on up. Hi, how are you tonight?
Good.
Okay, now who's gonna tell me about the petition here? I think we got some materials from you, so maybe I can talk a little bit first. Okay, as I recall, last time you were here, we asked you to come back with some drawings to show us what it looked like on the inside. I don't know if there's gonna be any further questions from the board, but we can do that. Has everybody had a chance to look in their packets? Okay. Looks like a nice place to hang around. If I was a little kid, I wouldn't mind being here. All right, all right. Does anybody have any questions for our petitioner?
No, I appreciate all the work you did putting these photos together. Gives us a good picture.
Any questions?
No.
No questions? Did you want anything to add? Okay. Now, you're requesting up to six children? Did we, did we write down any conditions last time? I thought we had some notes. Do we have any notes last time? I'm gonna write a few notes here. You said that you were open from what time to what time?
7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
7:00 AM to when?
5:00 PM.
Seven to five? Oh, okay, seven to five, all right.
Four children, is that right?
Yes, she has four children.
You're looking for up to six, is that what it is?
Six, yes.
But how many children does she have? What? Okay, you have one child, and how old's that child?
Two of three years old.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. How old is her child?
Eleven years old.
Oh, 11. Oh, okay, all right, that's a, that's a bigger kid.
She has one of 11 and another one of six.
Okay, so you have two kids, one 11 and one 6. All right, and the children that you watch, what are their ages?
Two of three years old. And one of one year old in 10 months. And another one of two years old.
Okay, so you got one two-year-old, two three-year-olds, and one, one year, 10-month? So she is, she's watching a total of four?
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay, okay. All right, okay. I think we covered the, the safety features. I've looked at the pictures. I think it looks good. I, I'm comfortable with the area. Am I missing any questions? I don't know if you were here on the last one, Anthony. Did you have any questions for the petitioners?
I did, I did not.
Okay. They're asking for a daycare, up to six children. They are licensed by the state. The bylaw does provide for up to six children, and our bylaw, I believe.
We did want to see a copy of the license, though, did we not?
I think we have it in the packet, yeah. We have a copy of the license, yep, yep, copy of the license.
We asked for a copy of the license, the floor plan and the picture.
Yep, right. Okay. Now, you're on, you're in a single-family home. You're over on Butler Ave, okay, okay. And it looks like you got plenty of parking. And they come in and they pick up early and then they come back and get the kids late in the day. Is that what goes on?
Yes. Yes, that's how it goes.
All right. Any other questions, concerns from the board? Okay, so what I thought is we would approve the special permit as requested, but we're gonna wait for Dolores to come back. But we can talk about the conditions. It would be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. How many days a week?
It would be Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, okay. So it'd be 7:00 AM. We're not doing anything without you here, Dolores. We're just talking.
Dolores, please.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right. Petitioner lives with her husband, two children ages 7 and 11. She's licensed by the Commonwealth. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Daycare, four children. One child's 14 months. Three other children are over three years old. No separate sleeping area for the children. Backyard is fenced and play area with synthetic grass. That looks nice. Parking for four to five cars, drop-off at different times in the morning, pickup at same time. Mr. Martin drove by the property, quite a bit of stuff on the property, not kept up. Boy concerned about up to six children in the daycare, plus petitioner's two children. Are you looking for up to six, or could we keep it at four right now?
Um, six kids.
You're looking for six right now? You have four right now. Do you have people calling you for six?
No, not yet. Yeah, she said that, actually, she, she just remembered that, yes, there was one baby that the mother was looking for.
Somebody, okay, all right. Now, what's the youngest that you can have? What's the youngest that you're allowed to have?
Six, six months.
Six months?
Yeah, that's the younger that she can have.
That's pretty young, okay. All right. Yeah, we're gonna ask you to make sure, I saw the pictures, your yard looks nice and cleaned up. You're gonna keep that yard nice and clean?
Okay. That's okay, I should maintain.
Okay, okay. How many children have you, how long you been doing this?
It will, it will turn one year. It has 10 months. She opened in March.
Okay, so you've been doing this for a year?
Yes, it's gonna be.
Have you ever cared for a child under one years old? Other than your own kids, yeah. Your own kids don't count. Okay, okay, all right. I, I just kinda answered my own question. Walked right into that one. And two, as a matter of fact. You're experienced, yeah.
Yeah, so in Brazil, she should be in the medical, children medical area, so.
I see.
Yeah, automatically.
Okay, all right. I mean, it just, to me, it just seems like so young to be looking after a six-month-old, you know? But, I mean, you're a mother, so I guess you know that. You got experience there, okay. All right, any other, anything that the board wants to chime in on about anything? So if we issued a special permit subject to those conditions that we talked about, that we discussed last time with Dolores, that are contained in these minutes, is that agreeable to everybody? Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM? We were talking about restricting her to four children because she has two of her own, but, I don't know, an 11 and a seven-year-old, I kinda think they can take care of themselves. I don't, I don't know that mother really has to keep that much of a watchful eye. All she's gotta do is yell at them, and they should stop, right? I mean, realistically, right? Not my household, that's just the way it is. Oh, yeah. Now, now, the one thing, I know you got a couple children yourselves, and I know last time we talked about all the kids playing together in the neighborhood, and the kids should be allowed to play together, no problem with that. But are you keeping the, the kids that you care for separate from all those other kids, right?
No. Yes, they, the, the kids from the daycare will be a part of that.
Okay, okay. Are you gonna have any sleeping areas for the kids, the young ones? If you get a young one, you're gonna need a sleeping area. You don't have any sleeping area?
On this, like, for example, six months, they will need to have...
Like a bassinet?
Yes, the net. So, yeah, she does have, she doesn't have built out because she doesn't have the baby, but...
So the mother would, would supply you?
She, yeah, she, she would supply that for the baby.
Well, that's a good idea anyway, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to maintain all the materials there.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, so I, I think the only condition is, instead of restricting her to four, we'll allow her to have the sex? Okay, all right. So with those conditions, anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the conditions we just spoke about.
Okay, and those, you understand those conditions, right? Okay, all right. Do you, we're just gonna hand this back to you, so you've got this, and I'm gonna hold on to it because I think we're gonna probably have some similar things to talk about. Okay, so Jay, you made a motion? To approve, seconded? John seconded to approve a special permit for a daycare, up to six children, with the hours that we talked about. Numbered children be six, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, five days a week. All right? You know what we're gonna do? We're gonna do a one-year review, like we do on most daycares. So after you've been in business for a year, we'll set them down for a one-year review date to come back and just make sure everything's okay. Usually, everything is okay. If we gotta tweak something, maybe we gotta tweak something, okay? Just make sure you keep your neighbors happy. There, you see the ones that come in and say things. Okay? All right, do we need any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. So, once the special permit is drafted, it will be clocked with the town clerk. And there, 20 days must elapse. After that 20-day period, then you can come in and see Dolores. She'll give you the special permit. You need to go over and, they need to record that one too. Yeah, they need to record that one. And one other condition. I'll ask the members if they will agree to this. This special permit is personal to this individual. When this individual ceases to do business or moves out of that house, the special permit lapses. If someone else wants a daycare there, they need to come back and apply themselves, okay? So this is personal to you. So this is personal to you. And I hope we're doing that with all of them. I think we are.
Então depois de basicamente vinte dias, a gente vem ver aqui e pega o permit, né, que eles deram. E aí ele adicionou mais uma condição, que nessa propriedade, se vocês se mudarem e a próxima pessoa entrar e quiser montar um daycare, eles também têm que fazer a mesma coisa. Têm que vir aqui e fazer tudo o processo.
Okay?
That's okay.
Okay, well, you're all set, okay?
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck.
I need to stand up.
All right, let me find... All right, you take a seat back there now. Who's up next here? Where's my sheet? I lost my... Oh, you know who you are. Come on up here. I'll announce you. Come on up here. All right, the last petition we have is petition 50...
Okay, so she did some folders. I don't know if you guys have all the information.
Okay, all right, well...
She did a special folder.
That's all right. No, I like it. Nice. I love lavender. That's a nice color. Okay, that's very nice. Okay, we're gonna hear petition 5071, Jessica Roost. The property's located at 144 West Jarmouth Road. It's in an R-25 zoning district, and this applicant seeks a special permit per 202.5 P7A use table to allow a family daycare for up to six children. All right, good evening. How are you tonight?
Como você tá hoje?
Bem. Good.
Good, okay. All right, you were here last time as well. I remember that. And you provided us with some pictures. Let me take a look of what you got here. Oh, you got this all done, okay? Yep, this is very nice. Okay. Now, where the kids play in the backyard, it's all fenced in, correct?
Quando as crianças estão brincando lá de fora, tem cercado por todo o caminho?
Yes, right.
Okay, and there's no way that they can walk out into the street, correct?
Não tem como eles ir pro lado de fora da rua.
All right.
No, it doesn't.
All right.
Playing in the street?
And are you looking for the same hours as the last lady, seven to five?
Teria mais ou menos o mesmo horário que o da Gabi, sete da sete, da manhã, cinco da tarde.
Yes, so we have seven.
Monday through Friday?
Hum, segunda a sexta. Segunda a sexta.
Yes, Monday through Friday.
All right.
I had last time, I had four children and her daughter.
Okay, now, how old are her children?
Quantos anos é as suas filhas? Uma tem sete e outra tem dois.
She has one with seven and the other one with two, two years old.
And seven?
Two and seven.
Okay. All right. And how many children is she looking to watch?
E quantas crianças você tá pretendendo cuidar?
Six. Six.
Y'all looking for six, too? Okay, okay.
Um, so now she has four with her daughter. So her daughter is included.
Her daughter's included in the six?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it would be.
Okay, so that would be a total of five. So she would... So could we say...
Oh, between... I'm sorry. Between the four of them, the... Her daughter's included already.
Her daughter's included already, okay.
So she would have four.
She's a member of the daycare?
Yes, she's a member.
All right.
We should just make sure it's six total, one being included.
Okay, so if we put a condition in, it's six total, one being her daughter, okay? So you'd have five others if you wanted.
Yes.
Okay, what's... How old is her other child?
A sua, tá uma de dois e a outra de sete.
Seven years old.
Seven.
Seven. Okay. So she's in what, second grade?
Qual... Qual ano?
Yeah, second grade.
Second grade, right, okay, okay. But right now, you watch four kids?
Mas agora são quatro crianças incluindo a sua filha, né?
Yes, four kids.
I think we'll throw this around for thought, but given the fact that your kids are a little bit younger, I would certainly prefer that you not add any new kids until those kids get a little bit older.
Então, pelo ponto de vista dele, é por as crianças tão um pouquinho mais novas ainda, então ele prefere, né, se você puder esperar essas crianças crescer um pouquinho, por exemplo, seus filhos, pra daí adicionar crianças mais novas.
Yes, that works for her.
So like when your... When your seven-year-old, say, is eight or nine, then you could add one in, okay? But right now, she's small and your other one's small, so I'm sure you gotta devote a lot of attention to both of them.
Então, por exemplo, o seu de sete anos ficar com oito, a nove?
Yeah, we're gonna go six children total. Two of them are included in her family, so a total of four.
E aí você consegue manter o olho na...
Thinking that. What are your thoughts on that, Anthony? Are you in agreement with that? She's got two young children right now. Maybe we restrict her to four other children outside of her family, include two for a total of six, the two in her family. And then once those kids, maybe in a year or so, get a little bit older, then she can increase it maybe to five. And then when her youngest is a few years older, then you can get the full six. But I think you're kinda...
Yeah, she said that they are turning... In a few months, they will be turning three and then the other eight. So it will not be like the full year.
All right, okay.
So maybe instead of a two-year review period, we just have a one-year review period, but with that condition?
Well, we generally do a one-year. We did a one-year on the last one. Well, maybe what we'll do is we'll do a one-year review and with... We're gonna do one with her, too, and then when she comes back, we'll have another discussion, okay? About your children and their ages and how it's working out, okay?
Então eles vão manter a mesma coisa da Gabi, vai manter por um ano. E aí depois de um ano, a gente vai voltar aqui e daí a gente vai conversar sobre isso de novo. Essas condições deles.
So you come back next year, your kid's a little bit older, you say, "Look, I wanna add one," or something like that. So right now, we're gonna restrict you to six, but two of them are your children. So four of them would be not your children.
Isso, então eles vão manter licença pra seis, pro espaço pra seis crianças. E daí depois que as suas crianças crescer um pouquinho, eles podem colocar, como tem uma vaga aberta, por exemplo.
Yes.
Okay, and your hours of operation would be seven AM to five PM?
Seria sete da manhã a cinco da manhã, cinco da tarde. Yes, seven to five.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm a little concerned. West Jarmouth is a very busy street. And I just wondered, is it possible to stagger the pickups as well as the drop-offs? Because, I mean, do you have room in the front for like a couple of cars? But if everybody came at one time, it might be a trouble or backing out onto the street. So I'm a little concerned about the parking issue. Is it staggered? Maybe you just ask her if their drop-offs and their pickups are staggered?
Normalmente, ele tá preocupado por a rua, essa rua específica ser muito movimentada. É sobre os pais deixar, buscar, deixar e buscar. É, normalmente são horários muito específicos, muito perto um do outro.
Não, cada um tem o seu horário de trabalho diferente, então uns pega mais cedo, outros tem gente que pega três horas da tarde, três e meio, outros vão pegar quatro, outros vão pegar cinco.
Yeah, so she's saying that the time that the parents drop off and pick up, it's always like different, because normally, like, one goes 3:30 to their home, and the other one goes five, and the other one goes four. So it does have like a time between every parent pick up and drop off.
Okay. I just think that's important on that street.
That is right.
Okay, okay.
I agree.
Did they pull into the driveway, too, to drop off, not on the side of the road?
Yes, uh-huh, the driveway. Então, normalmente eles deixam bem na vaga em si específica, certo? Yes, in the driveway.
All pickups and drop-offs shall take place in the driveway? Would you consider... Would you put that in the other decision as well? We should've put that in there.
Eles vão sempre deixar na vaga de do daycare, né? Deixar e buscar.
Other than that, I think that she provided all the information we asked for.
Yep, yep. No, they both did a very nice job. Yep, yep. Anything else from the board? Anthony, anything you wish to add, or questions, or anything?
Nope.
All right. Is there anything that you would like to add? Eh, you're better off not saying it. You're already way ahead of yourself.
I really appreciate them both. They were really nice. And we know each other closely, so I can definitely approve everything that they were planning to do. I also work in the daycare, so as the other girl talked to us, the woman talked to us at the last time that she pronounced herself, I do agree with every word that she said. We all experienced being the daycare, so it's really secure.
So you're not only the interpreter, but you're also the character reference.
See? Yes. I'm feeling myself here, so weird.
You're doing well. You're doing well. You're a great representative of these guys, okay?
Thank you.
All right, well, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Go ahead, John. I make a motion to approve petition...
Last one.
The special permit for petition 5071 with the conditions that we...
The conditions that we've recited, which are basically consistent with the last one. But that, I think, for her, the other situation was a little different, because the kids are a little older. But this one, she's got two young children, so of the six, two of them are included with her family. Okay. All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second?
Seconded by Barbara? John? Motion by John, seconded by Barbara, to approve the special permit with the conditions as listed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously, like I said to the last lady. After the decision's done, okay, we're gonna clock it with the town clerk. Twenty days must elapse. Now, don't call Dolores in twenty days. She might have it all done, but give her a few days, okay? She's quick, but, you know, don't call her on the twentieth day. She'll call you, as a matter of fact.
Yes, that's...
And twenty days must elapse after it's clocked with the town clerk. Then you take the special permit, take it over to the Bartsford Registry of Deeds, and record it, and bring a copy back to us. And we do have the condition that this special permit is personal to her as well. And if she moves or no longer is in the daycare business, then the special permit will lapse. Okay?
Okay, então sobre... Também tem uns vinte dias, então a gente vai dar vinte dias pra Dolores preparar os documentos. Aí a gente pega os documentos com ela, a gente leva lá no... Em Bartsford, na Corte. E aí depois a gente traz uma cópia de novo pra eles. E aí a mesma coisa. Depois de um ano, eles vão supervisar. E a mesma coisa também cabe pra casa. É, se você se mudar, a outra pessoa vai ter que vim fazer o mesmo processo.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate you getting all that additional information. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, take care now. Have a nice night.
You guys...
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, we've got business.
We do?
Oh, no, I just wanted to say... Second... Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 There's no opposed ever on that one, all right.